Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer.
Session is called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
So, no objection? Chair is none. The secretary general is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives: Abaya, Abayon, Abeljanosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adion, Advincula, Agarrau, Agabau, Aglipabiliar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumag Saysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatzing, Bagilac, Banal, Barbers, Bazaga, Batawil, Batocabe, Bautista Bandigan, Velaro, Velmonte Feliciano, Velmonte Jose Cristoper, Velmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Biazon, Miliones, Viron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Begtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Caliso Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pret, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Cerrapica, Ceriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Co, Coanco, Coliantes, Cortez, Fortuna, Josalan, Crisologo, Coa, Coaresma, Cueba, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Nimaporoh Abdullah, Nimaporoh Muhammad, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Hermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Josebio, Ebardoni, Pariñas, Fernando, Perejuliet, Perej Luis, Periol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fuentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Marc, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hopper, Alojos, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laogan, Lasatin, Leachon, Li, Limcaixon, Lobregat, Lopez Benhar, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Soharto, Mangodadato Sahid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Meliana, Mendín, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Oaminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Paqueau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primissias Agabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Bebilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Saqdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, Sanbar, San Dobol, San Copan, Santos Repto, Salmianto César, Salmianto Edgar Meri, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Sinzon, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Albarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagros, Tan Cherni, Tejada, Tebes, Tianko, Tin, Tinio, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Joliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Bergara, Villafuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Medesho, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Subiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 204 members responded to the call. With 204 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of the call room. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 65 of February 2018.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. Journal Number 65 is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the secretary-general be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The secretary-general is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 7189, Providing Rise Incentives to Top Ten Students in Every Grade or Year Level, Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7190, Requiring All Electric, Cable and Telecommunications Companies to Conduct Periodic Inspections of Their Respective Aerial Utility Lines, Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 7192, Changing the Name of Biking High School in Barangay Biking, Dawis Bohol, Tunicasho and Bolos Junior Technical Vocational High School, Representative Relampagos.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7194, Designating Authority to the Private Sector to Determine Road Worthiness of Public and Private Vehicles, Representative Bolivares.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7195, Establishing a Licensing Office Branch of the LTO in City of Paranyaki, Representative Bolivares.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7196, Upgrading the Minimum Monthly Salary of Nurses to 30,000, Representative Sarati, Tinio, Several Others.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment and the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 7197, Increasing the Monthly Salaries of All Government Employees, Raising the Minimum Monthly Salary in Government Services to 16,000, Representatives Sarati, Tinio and Several Others.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 7198, Strengthening Nation Building, Representative Salón.
To the Committee on People's Participation.
House Bill 7200, Establishing the Philippine Data Interconnectivity System, Representative Salón, Salo and Kalalang.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 7201, Establishing a Basic Education School in Every Indigenous People's Community in the Country, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7202, Increasing the Authorized Campaign Expenditures of Candidates of Political Parties, Amending for the Purpose, Section 13 of Republic Act 7166, Representative Chipeco.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 7203, Creating the Philippine Sea with Development Authority, Representative Dalipe.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
Resolutions, House Resolution 1689, Direct the Committee on Agriculture to Inquire in the Perennial Issue of Supply Procurement and Importation of Rice, Representative Chávez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1690, Congratulating Brother Eduardo B. Manalo for his designation as Special Envoy of the President for All His Filipino Concerns, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1691, Congratulating the Iglesia de Cristo for marking its 50th anniversary, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1692, Calling for Investigation on the Poverty Implications of the Arrest of the Supermarket Employees, Representative Suárez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1690, Calling for the Committees on Transportation and Housing and Urban Development to Investigate the Report that the proposed Southeast Metro Manila Expressway will pass through areas in Barangay Batasan Hills, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1694, Direct appropriate Committee to Investigate the Case of Joanna di Baffeli's, Representative Violago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1695, Expressing Fund Condolences of the House on the Demise of National Artists in the Philippines, Esabelion Napalyion Billy Billosa Bobebua, Representative Relampagos.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1696, Direct appropriate Committee to Urge the Government for Immediate Relief of Agricultural Communities Affected by the Eruption of Mount Mayon, Representative Salón.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Solution 1697, Direct the DOH to Report Two and Inform the House on the Status of Field Health Facilities Enhancement Program, Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1698, Congratulating Commanding Philippine Fighter Jervin Kontilyak Angkahas, Representative Spineda Romero, Several Others.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Solution 1699, Congratulating Commanding Hillary Andales, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1701, Condemning in the Strongest Possible Terms the Naming of Five Undersea Features in the Philippine Rice by the Republic People's Republic of China, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Solution 1702, Direct appropriate Committee on Agriculture and Food and appropriate Committee of the House to Investigate the Disposition undertaken by the BOC, Representative Panganiban.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1704, Calling to Inquire on the Government Agencies and Private Establishments concerned with Housing, Representative Bertis.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1705, Congratulating Commanding Jervin Angkahas, Representatives Rodríguez, Uy and Unabia.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Solution 1706, Direct the Committee on Natural Resources to Inquire the Reported Establishment of Structures in Forest Areas, Representative Ti.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate, Message dated February 14, Informing that on February 13, designated Senators Escudero, Bam Akindo, the Fourth, Grace Poe and Ralph Director as Conference to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Complete Information of Senate Bill 1279 and House Bill 5269.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 14, Informing that on February 13, designated Senators Laxson, Win Gachalian, Juan Miguel Subiri, Joel Villanueva, Gregorio Nasen II and Antonio Sani Trillanes as Conference in the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on Complete Information, Subsenate Bill 1662 and House Bill 6573.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications Letter dated January 23 of Martin Gerald T. Bilhamor, Municipal Mayor Carmen Cibú.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 29 of Beatrice Waika Burnay, Municipal Mayor Alcantara Cibú.
To the Committee on Legislative Francises.
Letter dated February 5 of Rodrique Ocaranseja, President Calapan Waterworks Corporation.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated February 14 of Roger Edinho, Deputy Director of BSP.
To the Committee on Banks and Intermediaries.
Committee Report, Report Number 618 on House Solution 1703.
To the Committee on Rules.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guest of the of the Third District Representative from Cavite, Honorable Alex Advincula. He is Mr. Eric Bustamante, the General Manager and Senior Vice Assistant Vice President of Philippine National Bank in New York, USA.
The guests of the Honorable Representative Alex Advincula, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Strike Revilia of the Second District of Cavite. They are the officials of Masisipag na Bakaoreñyong NGOs, otherwise known as Mabango Federasyon Incorporated of the City of Bakaore Cavite.
The guests of the Honorable Strike Revilia, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the consideration of measures under the Calendar of Business.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. The same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, under the Calendar of Unfinished Business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 7120 as contained in Committee Report Number 598, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary-General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. The Secretary-General is directed to read House Bill 7120.
House Bill 7120, An Act Granting Philippine Citizenship to Mr. Philip Leach.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Justice be recognized, Honorable Ray Umalí.
The Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Representative Umalí, is recognized for the sponsorship of this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think we have, we went past the sponsorship already and there is, I am ready to entertain interpolation questions, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. Period of interpolation is now open. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from the First District of Albay, the Honorable Edsel Agman, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Edsel Agman is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We distinguish sponsor yield to some questions.
Gladly, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Mr. Speaker, I am not opposed per se to this bill, but I would like to ask some clarificatory questions. May we know from the distinguished sponsor, what is the constitutional basis for a congressional grant of citizenship to a foreigner?
Mr. Speaker, your honor, the basis and the constitutional provision is Article Four on citizenship, Section One in particular, Section 1.4, and if I may read, the following are citizens of the Philippines, Subparagraph Four, those who are naturalized in accordance with law.
Well, there are two regular processes for naturalization, one by administrative process, another by judicial process. Is that correct, Mr. Distinguished Sponsor?
That is correct. Commonwealth Act Number 473 on Judicial Naturalization and RA 9139 on Administrative Naturalization.
Is there any specific provision in the Constitution which authorizes the Congress to grant congressional, to have a congressional grant of citizenship to a foreigner?
This is it, Mr. Speaker, your honor. It's Article Four, Section 1.4, and this is a direct and specific provision of the Constitution.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to think that the congressional, that the basis of a congressional grant of citizenship to a foreigner is the general or plenary legislative authority of Congress to enact laws. Would that submission be correct?
I beg your pardon, your honor.
I would like to think, Mr. Speaker, that the Congress, the constitutional basis for Congress to grant citizenship to a foreigner is plenary power to enact laws.
Yes, sir.
It is.
Yes, sir.
So this would have to go through the process of a bill, that is why we are considering it on second reading. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, may we know from the distinguished sponsor, what are the present policies of the House Leadership in the grant of congressional citizenship to a foreigner?
Let me cite, Mr. Speaker, your honor, Rule 10, Covering the Legislative Grant of Philippine Citizenship, and this is, this appears in Section 25. A bill granting Philippine citizenship to a specific person or individual shall be considered as an application for naturalization.
Now, but, you know, that is the process, but what I am asking is, what are the current policies of the House Leadership which would guide, say, the Committee on Justice and this chamber in granting citizenship to a foreigner?
Well, of course, the policy is that a bill is filed, and when a bill is filed, this is heard in the Committee on Justice, particularly the Subcommittee, and this will all depend on the wisdom of the majority of the committee and of the plenary when, when the, when the matter is put to a vote before this honorable body.
Well, that is still the process. It would not answer my question, but let me go to a specific or arbiters. For example, is there a minimum residence, residence requirement for a foreigner to be given a special grant of Philippine citizenship?
There is none, your honor. This is really subject to the wisdom of each and every member, and upon a vote of the majority of the members of this body, then this is the collective wisdom. This is the policy adopted insofar as the grant of a legislative legislative grant of Philippine citizenship. But of course, in the course of the deliberation of any application done through a bill, which becomes, this being a bill, becomes the law on citizenship, then we also consider the requirements under Commonwealth Act Number 473 and 9139, but we are not strictly bound by the requirements therein, because there is an equally, there is, I should say, an equal basis coming from any member who would sponsor the citizenship. This is a right and privilege also of any member of this chamber to sponsor the legislative grant, and that in itself is considered a policy, and if the majority of the members of this house would approve of it, then that is considered the policy also of the committee, that's why when this matter was brought or filed and, and assigned to the Committee on Justice, and then further delegated to the Subcommittee on Naturalization of the Committee on Justice, we have here the Honorable Noli Puente Belia, who chairs this Subcommittee, and he is also articulate for the rules and the policies, and I would like to think that he has applied also these rules in considering and recommending the approval by the Subcommittee of the Grant of Legislative, Legislative Grant of Citizenship to the, to Mr. Leach.
Under the Covering Commonwealth Act on Citizenship by Naturalization, is there any minimum residence requirement?
There is, your honor, under Commonwealth Act, he must be not less than ten years of age, ah, sorry, ten years resident.
Well, is this ten-year minimum requirement for residency not adapted by the Committee on Justice?
As I said, we are not strictly bound, Mr. Speaker, your honor, by this requirement of Commonwealth Act, because this right and privilege and power and mandate is also granted to the House of Representatives, to the Justice Committee, and therefore, the Subcommittee deemed it appropriate even while this applicant for citizenship, who is an American citizen, has only seven years residency, the matter, because of the grant and privilege also to any member to sponsor him, was considered, then that particular requirement under Commonwealth Act is deemed waived.
Well, don't, is the distinguished chairman willing to adopt as a policy the minimum requirements for naturalization under the Commonwealth Act with respect to granting citizenship to foreigners by Congress?
Well, this, this, I have no objection to it, except that, again, this is a matter that cannot only be addressed to the Chair of the Committee on Justice, but to the body as a whole. This must have the collective approval of the plenary before the same can be adopted as the rule of the Committee on Justice and of the House of Representatives.
Is the distinguished chairman prepared already to recommend to the House that a foreigner, before he is granted a congressional grant of citizenship, must at least comply with the minimum requirements of the Commonwealth Act on Naturalization?
At this point in time, it has not been discussed at all, so at this point in time, this representation is not prepared to adopt any policy that will put stringent policies that will disqualify the grant, the legislative grant of Philippine citizenship to an applicant who is sponsored by any member of this, of the House of Representatives. I said, as I said earlier, this is a privilege that we grant a person, a foreigner, who would like to be a citizen, but this is equally a right and privilege that is vested upon any member. If there is, if he believes that a foreigner should be granted Philippine, Philippine citizenship for the many reasons that he puts forward in the bill that he filed, and if this is adopted by the majority of the Subcommittee and later on by the Mother Committee, and eventually to be approved by the House in plenary, then this should be the policy, and I, I would not want to limit this privilege and/or power of any member to sponsor the grant of, to sponsor the legislative grant of Philippine citizenship to a person who he believes ought to be called a Filipino as well.
In the case of the proposed grantee, Mr. Philip Leach, is he qualified to be a naturalized Filipino citizen under the Commonwealth Act?
Well, he did not, as yet, have or satisfied the ten-year residency requirement, but of course, Commonwealth Act 473 also provides that the ten-year residency requirement may be reduced to five years for certain condition, under certain conditions, and so if Commonwealth Act admits of certain conditions, then by all means, a legislative grant of Philippine citizenship should be flexible enough to consider situations where there are other reasons that can be considered for the legislative grant of citizenship.
May we know, distinguished sponsor, under the Commonwealth Act, what are the conditions or reasons which would trigger the reduction of the minimum residency requirement of ten years to only five years?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, your honor, there are five there are five conditions for which the residency requirement may be reduced to five years. One is having honorably held office under the government of the Philippines or under any of the provinces, cities, municipalities, or political subdivisions thereof, having established a new industry or introduced a useful invention in the Philippines, being married to a Filipino woman, having been engaged as a teacher in the Philippines in a public or recognized private school not established for the exclusive instruction of children or persons of a particular nationality or race in any of the branches of education. in any of the branches of education or industry for a period of not less than two years, and having been born in the Philippines.
With respect to these five conditions, may we know, distinguished sponsor, whether the prospective grantee, Philip Leach, has in his favor any of these conditions?
Yes, Your Honor. The, the prospective grantee holds a degree in biochemistry, minor in food science, and in pursuit thereof, he has established and founded Pacific Rim Natural Food Products Incorporated. He has launched Radical Organics brand for organic toasted coconut chips. He has distributed these products in different parts of the world. And this product is widely available in many of our commercial establishments, S&amp;R Starbucks, Rostam's. He had investments worth a total of one hundred forty million in, in his company and also in the tourism industry. He is involved, he has done philanthropic work, being involved in disaster aid response and rebuilding team through the Balay Kublihan project, using earthbag technology to create homes for those affected by Yolanda, by typhoon Yolanda. So he has had breakthroughs in food science and has done philanthropic work in the, works in the Philippines.
Of all the five conditions which can be used to reduce the residence requirement of ten years to five years, what in particular, what particular condition in particular can be invoked in favor of the prospective grantee? Would it be the introduction of a new industry?
This is having established a new industry or introduced a useful invention in the Philippines.
This industry, which has been introduced by the prospective grantee, is that a new industry?
Well, this is a revolutionary technology in coconut. As you very well know, Philippines is a coconut-producing country. But over the years, the coconut industry has suffered a lot in terms of technological advancement. And his technology is now being used even by the Department of Agriculture in the many conduct of seminars that offers this technology to many of the coconut farmers of the country.
Well, I don't know. I, I was not present when this condition was assessed by the Subcommittee. But I would surmise that there was sufficient submission that this industry is new. So much so that the grantee, even under the Commonwealth Act, can avail of a reduced citizenship requirement. Now, as a whole, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, what are the special attributes of a foreigner to qualify him for a grant of citizenship by the Congress without undergoing the regular naturalization process under the Commonwealth Act?
Well, in this particular case, the prospective grantee has his son living here and in fact doing, or assisting him in his philanthropic works. She also has, he also has an adopted daughter, also living here, went to school here, and is also married here and resides in the Philippines. As I said, she, he has contributed to and invested in agri- agri-technology that is now a product that is exported abroad. In fact, as I said, the Secretary of Agriculture wholeheartedly supports his product, and he is used, and he has been invited not only in the country, but even in foreign venues to promote quality Philippine exports using this technology. More than that, this grant, proposed grantee has brought in cutting-edge adventure to the Philippines through, in an industry, in the tourism industry, using, by establishing the G-Max reverse bungee in Boracay in 2014. This investment cost about sixty million, and this is now being enjoyed in Boracay by many of our countrymen, including foreigners who have visited Boracay and have patronized this G-Max reverse bungee, a, a, an equipment that is being offered to the many patrons in Boracay Island.
But of course, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the achievements of a son or a daughter of a proposed grantee will not endure to that grantee. But in any event, I am asking all of these policy questions, Mrs. Speaker, so that this House should be able to establish some standards for granting citizenship to a foreigner. Because, for example, it should approximate the minimum requirements for the grant of citizenship by naturalization under the Commonwealth Act. Or it must specify certain special attributes under which the grantee would qualify, rather than consider the grant on a case-to-case basis. I, I would, I recall, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that when I was Chairman of the Committee on Justice, I did not recommend the approval of any bill granting congressional citizenship to a foreigner. And the policy then which I had was to let the foreigner undergo the regular process of naturalization, either by judicial or administrative process. But anyway, that would be a suggestion to adopt certain standards or policies. With that statement, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I end my interpellation.
Thank you. Just to respond to it, we, we take note with gratitude the suggestion of my distinguished colleague. This is a matter that we will take up in the Subcommittee on Naturalization, headed by Congressman Noli Puentebelia. And we will consider this suggestion and deliberate upon it as part of an output that we will do in this Seventeen Congress. But let me also say that if this may be of interest to any member, this prospective grantee is an American without any derogatory record. And I do not know if there is any American who has ever sought Philippine citizenship. This is one, probably one of a kind, because I would like to think that there are many more Filipinos who would want to become American citizens and not otherwise. But this is, and I take my hat off this prospective grantee, and I hope the members would support me in, by favoring and voting for the grant of Philippine citizenship to this American by the person, by the name of Philip Lowell Leach, who would now want to be among us, want to be called a Filipino. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you. Kong Edsel, Manong Edsel, maraming salamat po.
Thank you for accommodating my interpellation. But let me just say that other Americans got congressional grant of citizenship like American basketball players. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from the First District of Northern Samar, his Honorable Raoul Daza, for his interpellation.
Your Honorable Representative Raoul Daza is recognized for his interpellation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Let me start by saying that in regard to this bill, the distinguished gentleman of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Renado Valley, will have my support.
Thank you, Your Honor.
However, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask some questions to put on record certain observations and perhaps comments that I'd like to make. My understanding is that under Article Four, Section One, Paragraph Four, which was quoted by the Chairman, among those considered to be citizens of the Philippines are, quote, "those who are naturalized according to law," unquote. I take it, Mr. Chair, that this provision should be related to the legislative power vested in Congress by the Constitution? Because if I recall correctly, Article Six, Section One says, quote, "The legislative power shall be vested in the Congress which conceives of the Senate and the House of Representatives, except to the extent reserved under the law on initiative and referendum," unquote. My question for the record, Mr. Speaker, is whether the Chair or as well as the distinguished sponsor would agree with me that even when we pass this bill and it also passes the Senate and becomes law, it's not because of any existing laws or statutes like Commonwealth Act 141, but that because it is a direct exercise of legislative power by Congress? Is my observation correct?
That is correct, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker.
So when this bill becomes law, it means that Congress has not been bound by, among other requirements, under existing statutes in regard to residence or other qualifications for naturalization? For example, if Mr. Leach has only one year residence, he could be granted Philippine citizenship by direct action of Congress? Am I correct?
That is correct, Your Honor.
Mr. Speaker, I am particularly attracted by the short resume attached to the bill. I come from Northern Samar, and the number-one industry of our province is coconut. Unfortunately, because of the decline in the prices of copra in the foreign market since decades ago, and the lack of technology available to our coconut farmers, the coconut farmers in my province have lived in poverty. And I see from the resume of Mr. Leach that he has that technology which has enabled the sale of high, higher-value coconut products, uplifting countless farmers and encouraging a healthy web life for them. As well as, I'm again paraphrasing from the resume, that he has developed a brand of organic toasted coconut chips which is being exported to Europe, Middle East, and Asia. I see here, Mr. Speaker, a source of hope for the impoverished coconut farmers in my province. May I ask the Chair if the Committee on Justice has verified and researched on the reliability of this information contained in the attached resume or information of Mr. Leach?
Yes, Your Honor, this was done through the Subcommittee on Naturalization headed by the Honorable Noli Puentebelia. And this is a matter that was confirmed, meaning that the proposed grantee is engaged in this business and has been helping or is producing this product using technologies of Pacific Rim Natural Foods product. In fact, it has also been verified that the Secretary of Agriculture is well aware of this product and, and is even using his technology and his expertise in the conduct of seminars, even outside of the country.
Now, given these assurances from the distinguished Chair of the Committee on Justice and the sponsor now on the floor, I feel assured, and I would like to reiterate, Mr. Speaker, my support for this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Chair of the Committee on Justice.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair is none, same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we now proceed to consider the individual amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair is none, the same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair is none, the same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 7120.
All those in favor of House Bill Number 7120, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7120 is now approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Honorable Ramon Rav Rokamora of the Lone District of Ciquhor. They are thirteen MBA students from Siliman University, led by Attorney Gloria Futalan.
The guests of the Honorable Rokamora, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider bills under the calendar of business for Thursday and Friday. Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules, allow me to put forth an omnibus motion for the consideration of the following: House Bill Number 7016 under Committee Report Number 579, House Bill Number 7166 under Committee Report Number 602, House Bill Number 7175 under Committee Report Number 603, and House Bill 7177 under Committee Report Number 605.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. House bills as aforementioned are now hereby approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider the respective explanatory notes as the sponsorship of the said measures.
Is there any objection? The chair is none, the same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate on the said local bills, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? Chair is none, the same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments and approve the committee amendments if any, as contained in the respective committee reports of the aforementioned bills.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading the following House bills: House Bill Number 7016, 7166, 7175, and 7177.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill 7016, 7166, 7175, and 7177. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The nays have it. The aforementioned bills are now approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with the rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House resolutions to the appropriate committees: House Resolution 1649 to the Committee on Transportation, House Resolution 1651 to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, House Resolution 1652 to the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs, House Resolution 1653 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability, House Resolution 1654 to the Committee on Energy, House Resolution 1656 to the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples, House Resolution 1658 to the Committee on Agriculture and Food, House Resolution 1659 to the Committee on Agriculture and Food, House Resolution 1660 to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, House Resolution 1665 to the Committee on Information and Communications Technology, House Resolution 1666 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability, House Resolution 1667 to the Committee on Ways and Means, House Resolution 1668 to the Committee on Agriculture and Food, House Resolution 1669 to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, House Resolution 1671 to the Committee on Ways and Means, House Resolution 1675 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and Health, House Resolution 1676 to the Committee on Agriculture and Food, House Resolution 1677 to the Committees on Good Government Reorganization, Basic Education and Culture, and Higher and Technical Education, House Resolution 1678 to the Committee on Trade and Industry, and House Resolution 1680 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and Energy.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 3988 and 7166 as contained in the lists to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none, the same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until Monday, February 26 at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Session is adjourned until Monday, February 26, 2018, at four o'clock in the afternoon.